All right, we'll call the order of the August 16th meeting of the City Council. Please rise for the flag.
Motion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Schar?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch? Here. Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Pinnipal?
Here.
Correctional approval of the minutes from 7:19, you have a motion to approve as written.
So moved.
Second. Second. And call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Perkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Correspondence, we're starting out a blaze, you want to start?
It's been pretty quiet.
Pretty quiet.
Just some phone calls regarding a property on East Lake Street.
East Lake Park Place.
East Lake Park Place and regarding some encroachment issues, but it seems to be taken care of.
Taken care of. Is that it? You got it?
Quiet.
Quiet. I had just a couple of questions on the ad hoc board, answered those and...
It's quiet for me.
I had a follow-up call or actually from our last meeting, I reported that someone had spoken to me about the spring of the parks in town and that person did give me the written information about a product that can be used to kill weeds that is not as toxic as what we're using. And so that's something that I'll bring up at budget time because it's a budget item. It costs more than what we pay for what we use now, but it's also...
It's safer.
But it's safer and yeah, but so I will keep that till we get into the budget thing.
All righty, is that it?
That's it.
All right, thank you for that. Questions, public comment, public's encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertaining to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting, has been called to order. State's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments listed or limited to three minutes and state your name and address before starting your comments and sign in. Any public comments?
Hi, my name is Jim Colgrove. I'm a member of the Rock Lake Improvement Association. We are actually working on two projects with you folks with the Public Works and I just wanted to come and let you guys know kind of where we're, what we're doing and where we're going on this. The first is marking of drains for keeping leaves debris pollution out of the drains. We have a small marker that we will be placing on the drains. This has been done in years past either by stenciling or by placing markers and we've been working with Paul Hermanson on making that come to fruition. We are also working with a Boy Scout, I was hoping he was going to be here tonight to help present, but at any rate, he is going to be doing an Eagle project and this drain marking is part of that Eagle project. Second project that we are working on that we are still kind of working through and evolving is a plan to do a campaign for keeping leaves out of the gutters during the fall season. The My Fair Lakes over in Madison has a wonderful site that has a bunch of different things. I have some handouts if you guys would like them, if that would be acceptable, not sure if that is, but at any rate, we are going to try and do a campaign that is showing more the wrong way to place leaves and the right way and working with Mr. Hermanson. He has expressed great interest that this will help you guys with the fall pickup and everything like that. So, thank you. Did you want me to sign in?
Yes, please.
Okay, great.
Andrew Martinez is the Eagle Scout.
Yes, correct.
And we talked to him. We actually need to have that on the agenda and the council needs to approve that process. So that'll be on the next September agenda and there will be a motion and everything prepared and that's when we told Andrew to come.
Okay, I had not been made aware of that, but that's fine. And I'm assuming that Mr. Hermanson had made you all aware of what's going on either through this committee or through Public Works. At least I'm hoping he had made you aware of that. Maybe not, okay. There's not a pen up here. Oh, there we have it.
Actually Steve, is that, the drains have all been, that was done years ago and was an Eagle Scout project too.
Well, we've had two Eagle Scout projects that actually sprayed it, stenciled it.
Stenciled them out.
And this one they're putting a placard on it actually. So they're providing all the materials and everything, they just need permission from you to put it on.
This one should last longer then.
I'm hoping, I think that's what they're hoping.
That's the idea. The stencils come off very, very quickly. This will be actually be up on the curb or on top of the cap and so it is a more permanent type of marking. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Is there another public comment? All right, take your time and then we'll go. City managers' report, Steve.
I provided the general check register, the police department report for June 2016. The Public Works Board asked me to provide all the data that was provided to them on the street maintenance projects that were being proposed for the 2017 budget. These are some pretty substantial expenses, so you'll want to review them closely because they're going to add about $1.25 million to the budget in 2017. I think they did a good job of proving its value, but that's a pretty substantial change. And there were several documents on that. They also provided some documents that highlighted potential projects for 2020, 2021, 2022. You'll note in our current one, we had like Topol Street and Woodland Beach Road and some of the lead lateral services have made it so that it might make more sense to look at a couple of other projects. Some of the other streets were selected because they didn't need water projects. Current streets are selected because they do need water projects. So that's information out there. They provide the detailed expenditures for Brewster, which will be the main project for next year, as well as the Water Street sanitary sewer extension, which is actually part of the South Main Street project because that's where the water, that's where the sanitary sewer starts. So it starts just slightly outside the parking lot here and then runs up to South Main Street. So we need that in place before 2018, so that'll be a project that goes. So those will be two of the big projects that we have going in 2017. Rock Lake Improvement Association has provided us as starting a new management plan, strategic plan, and they've put together a committee and they've asked me to serve on it. I may have some problems with that and so I may ask for a substitute off and on. If one of you would like to do that, let me know. There are some advantages to that because, you know, we discussed a lot of things at the last strategic planning group and I supported a lot of the items that didn't get done. So it may be benefited for a council member to be in on those. We also received the environmental report from the Federal Historic Preservation Organization, so everything is now ready to go for the South Main Street project, but it was 10 days too late, so it's going to be split into two years, 18 and 19.
Is there anything we can do about that?
I don't think so. They are pretty rock hard that they're going to do it that way. One concession they did do is they would run from Madison to Pinnacle and then Pinnacle to the end and the vast majority is from Pinnacle up to Madison, so it'd be a pretty minimal project, other than it's a rather difficult project because that's the one stretch where you have problems with no additional options for getting around Lake Mills without going through there, so. Well, that is a very difficult stretch of the project, it is a very short portion of it.
Will South Main Street be open that second year?
The winter it'll be open and it'll be, it's generally open except for the stretch that's being reconstructed, so generally, yeah, from Pinnacle north will be totally rebuilt in 18 and so that will all be open. You know, the only stretch you'll have that will be under construction will be south of there in 19.
Does that include part of South Main?
Yes, that's the, from Pinnacle south, it runs basically past Sandy Beach Road, County Highway A, and then almost out to St. Paul's.
Okay, thank you.
But it, Mead and Hunt actually picked up the document and hand-delivered it from place to place rather than waiting for it to be mailed, so it got done faster. So we would be able to move faster on all the projects that we need to get done, but it was still a split, it's still going to be a split project once it hit out August 1st. The dam is substantially done. When I say that, it's by engineer standards, it's not substantially done because you have to be like 99% done, but in this case, the head walls are poured, the flume is poured, the culverts are put in, they started digging the pit where they will create the waterfall. Separate contractor actually installs the butterfly wings for the dam and another contractor installs the skata, so as far as as we're going, it's moving along pretty well, it will be done on schedule. East Lake Park Place is also moving along. I had my doubts on some days, but it looks like they will have paid lint on the street as required by September 1st, at least the first layer. Any questions?
I got one on going back to the street maintenance too, the map. The section between Marguerite and West Prospect Street on North Ferry, that's almost a dirt road through there. I think something needs to be addressed on that if we're going to have this kind of a budget.
And where were you at?
On North Ferry, right at the end by, from Marguerite, around Marguerite over to West Prospect.
I think that will probably be done this year rather than next year.
Okay.
But that's, that's an issue that we'll look at and have to resolve because that requires a lot more asphalt payment than maintenance. That's almost a reconstruct, but we'll, we'll look at how that falls out. This is actually, they're doing quite a bit this year.
Okay.
As you noticed. A lot of holes in the pavement, a lot of slaloming through the city and hoping that the asphalt got done today. And then the oil and chip will come in in the next couple of days. So, see what we get. They may be looking at it too because I know there are a couple of streets that if they had any money left after this was done, there were a couple of streets that they were going to look at and make some specific repairs.
All right, anything else for Steve? All righty. See, we got minutes from Public Works Board, July 12th, Police and Fire Commission, June 18th, Library Board from June 20th, and Joint Rock Lake Committee from July 5th. Those minutes will go on record as written. Council of Business, we'll get the license, tavern license read please. Just the name.
Damon Mysgier.
Damon. Do we have a motion to grant the tavern operator's license?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Perkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Motion 16-8-2-1, can we get that one read, please?
Motion 16-8-2-1 directing the city manager to accept the donation of a statue from the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills, whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills has heretofore created a pedestrian walkway that connects West Lake Street with Water Street and whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes, may grant the city manager the ability to accept donations to the city and whereas the City Council has reviewed the proposed donation and it meets with requirements set by the City Council. Be it therefore moved the 16th day of August 2016 by the City of Lake Mills Council that the City Council does hereby accept the donation and installation of the statue from the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills. Be it further moved that the City Council appreciates the efforts and generosity of the Arts Alliance and when maintenance of the statue becomes necessary, the city will seek funding for said maintenance from the resources set aside by the Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills.
All righty, and we get a motion to waive the rules and let the Arts Alliance come up and talk?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Perkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Well, welcome. What can you tell us?
We in addition would like to put, oh, I'm sorry. In addition to the sculpture, the gift of the lake sculpture, we would like to put two circular benches, one in, on either side of the sculpture on forecourt where the circles are and right now there's a garbage can in there and we feel like it really calls for something there. So we've talked to the artist and about designing a sculpture, excuse me, a bench that would match the sculpture in the paneling of the skirt, in the color and the design. It would be, and we met with Mr. Wilkie too about this and it would be portable in that you could move it with a forklift, but then it wouldn't be, then it wouldn't be movable. And so Steve, will you talk about the size and everything and the construction?
Sure, sure. Each one of the, each one of the benches would be 36 inches in diameter, 17 inches tall, and then there would be a lip on the top of it and I believe you have a drawing of that, I handed it to Heather. And so basically, it would be kind of like a toadstool in a way with a lip running around the top, four inches on the top. And then if it needed to be moved, then a forklift could come in, pick it up, move it around, move it back, and it'll be heavy enough. Teresa Lynn, the artist, would then make this out of concrete and it would be many hundreds of pounds, so you know, nobody would be, you know, monkeying around with it. And then the sculpture itself is going to be built on a pedestal, which also will be movable with a forklift and it's going to be about 17 inches tall as well. The bottom of that is going to have a, it'll be a smaller diameter pedestal on the bottom, four inches tall, and so the forklift could get in at the bottom of that and then pick up that, you know, if it needed to be moved as well. And it will not interfere with the manhole that is, you know, exists in the position right now.
And in that way that neither the benches nor the sculpture would be directly attached to those pavers down below. The Arts Alliance would like to set aside $500 in maintenance should there be any future maintenance issues? And we haven't insured now until the, the sculpture itself right now until the end of September, so in that last week of September, the artist would come and remove it and take it back and if you were to accept it and the benches to make the, to make the benches over the winter and also then she would, if you look now, it's a little, it's not tightly put together and some of those tiles are moving, but see, she would weld the whole thing and it would be, look much better that way and be very tight and then we could install it in the spring when the weather was, was nice again.
And just, so this donation is for the lady of the lake, the two benches, the installation next spring and $500 for maintenance, is that correct?
Yes, and we would, we would also pay for the pedestal for the lady, the gift of the lake, the lady of the lake sculpture.
Would the pedestal be in the same location as it is right now or move slightly?
Just, it's, it's close to that. We think that we can get it dead on center because it'll be smaller, but we just always have to take into consideration that metal manhole cover that's slightly off-center in that circle there.
Any concerns or we're good?
Is there, we don't have any concerns, ADA concerns or anything like that?
That was the first one we checked, that's why, before we allotted the first time, that's what we checked.
Right, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, what's it called? The motion, so that we can discuss it.
All righty, second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Perkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Now that was, I just made it so we could discuss it.
So did you have any more questions for Steve or are we done there?
Well, I just, the question I have, and I'm probably just missing something, but did we move it from a temporary thing to a permanent thing? Is that what this resolution does?
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, when it came in, it was, I mean, that was the intent all along, was we would have it till September and if we wanted to buy it at that time, that was the option. Alliancees now pick that up and so.
Well, I've heard nothing but positive comments on, on the statue over the summer.
Yeah, me too. The other thing I had, was that the only drawing of the benches? It looked like a hand drawing, is that just a conceptual, here's kind of what we're... So is that going to be the same kind of clay tile work as in the lady's dress?
Well, the lady's dress is poured aluminum and then it's just the plain aluminum unless she's put that blue color on it, patina on it. So she would take panels, just like the, you know, the dress now is a little bit shaped like this, but the panels would be rectangular and they would just be circular, so it would match the skirt just straighter.
Okay.
The panels would be directly placed, the panels would be part of the concrete sculpture. Instead of bolted on, they would be part on her. She would then weld these panels together and then pour the concrete on the inside of it, so it would be a unit.
So you're not going to see, it's not like bolts you're going to see, it's going to be literally a one-piece deal?
Correct.
Movable by forklift, but teenage.
No teenage boys.
No teenagers.
Now, have our city staff seen this and approved the benches?
Yes.
That has happened.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Artz? Any more questions at all?
No, I mean, my biggest concern is always how do we care for it afterwards and they've helped answer that.
Starting to take care of that. All right, and in the case we have motion, please call the vote.
Mr. Schar?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Perkovich?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next one, discussion decision, Sandy Beach feasibility, as motion 16-8-2-2. Can we have that read, please?
Motion 16-8.
Is it between something? 16-2?
Yes, we should be on item C for the...
Special event, sorry about that.
That's okay.
We'll go to, how about two, 16-8-2-2.
Motion 16-8-2-2 directing the city manager to authorize the consultant to proceed with the business optimization event, whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by Wisconsin State statutes, may grant the city manager the ability to accept and approve this business optimization event and whereas the City Council has reviewed the business optimization proposal by Schenk SC and it meets with the requirements set by the City Council. And whereas the staff requested a proposal for a business optimization event and Schenk SC submitted their proposal. Be it therefore moved the 16th day of August 2016 by the City of Lake Mills Council that the City Council does hereby approve the acceptance of an agreement for Schenk SC completing business optimization event at a cost of $12,600.
All right, and then do you want a motion to approve first? Want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All righty. Steve, do you want to explain exactly what's going on?
Yeah. I don't know if you've looked at the special events permit application that we've drawn up based on your direction at the last time and it's been kind of sitting in our office and we've been working on issues and every time we have a department has a meeting, we kind of work through all these issues and they just keep coming up and they keep going back and forth. And we've historically, you know, we've done swim lane type projects for a lot of our processes, but they've changed off and on because we've added staff or eliminated staff. For a while it didn't matter because we didn't have anything happening and now just special events permits alone, we, we've been in the 60s on special events permits, housing permits, zoning permits. All types of permits are coming through and they need to have a better process for us to keep moving. What I've been able to do in the past, just hasn't been able to do it, especially with this special events permit. We wanted to make sure that special events permit worked as well for the customer as it does for the city staff and so we wanted to be able to make this move as effectively as possible, so. Schenk, through Kevin Shaver here, and so if you have any questions for Kevin, he's available. Put together proposal to be able to go through and he has worked for some major organizations in the United States and done a lot of top work for doing this type of thing, to be able to assist us in putting together processes, business optimization processes for site plan review, special events permits, zoning permits, subdivision applications, all those types of things, and that's what he would do. The county did theirs, had a very good result. I can refer you to multiple other communities that have done it, that have been very satisfied with the projects that they've done. And I, I just could not put together something effective enough on my own, on the special events permit and as long as we were bringing them in, I felt we, you know, it would be best to have them do all of it because then we tend to hit some dead spots in our processes and I think Heather can vouch for that. So that's where I, that's why we brought this forward. And so Mr. Shaver's here from, from Schenk. If you have any questions for him on what it does and how it makes the improvements and what he does, you're more than welcome to ask.
Schenk has done other local people around here, cities?
Schenk is the company that he works for and it's a Wisconsin CPA firm, but they started to branch out and provide a couple of other business opportunities and this was one of them and this is the one that caught my eye. So I sat down and had a long conversation with Kevin and went over what we've done, where we're at, and he put together proposal on how he could take us the rest of the way.
We don't need to suspend the rules to have him speak, do we?
I don't believe so, he's, he's the proposal.
I'd like to have him come up.
Can you come up? Yeah, you got time for a couple of questions? And actually Steve, it's, I mean, special events is probably the bulk, but it looks like, I'm looking at the flow diagram, all permits.
All permits, all applications. He's covering a much broader range than just the special... He's covering a much broader range than just the special events permits. We, we figured you might as well get them all and approve all the processes. This is one opportunity where you can make your customers much happier with the city's processes. And, you know, we're at that point where we could use the help.
Before you ask me a question, I'll just let you know, I brought a, a process map of a treasury department in a county in Wisconsin. I took all the ownership off, so I'm not disclosing any private data from them, but to show you what one looks like. But the, the steps we would go through is document the process from beginning to end, so from a request to a permit released or rejected for all the different versions. And through that process, you identify opportunities to improve. So the people are actually helping me define how you do it. Naturally, you're going to say that never works, or that's a pain, or I'm going to see things myself from my experience. And we capture all those as we document the current process today. And then we take those as our opportunities to make it better.
Can I ask how you research them? Do you talk to staff or what?
Yes. Yeah, we, I would come here, we, in the proposal, we talked about probably one day, sorry, one day a week for four to five weeks. And I would call in each process and map it out individually to where we end up with a total map of the process. What's in my head is a left, kind of like a Excel chart grid. The left-hand side, which would be the swim lanes, would be the permits and the upper side would be the departments. So you would see where each permit goes. And then we'd start looking at how long it sits somewhere, what's the volume, what issues come up, and really start dialing in the process.
So when you're, when you're going through this process, do you look at, obviously there's, there's two things I look at. How easy it is for the staff and how easy it is for the customer?
Yes.
When you weigh those two against each other, if they're competing, who wins? The customer or the...
That's really a choice I would look to you to make. You know, as, as a citizen, I'd prefer the customer, but that may not be the efficient way to run the department either.
Got it.
So we have to balance those.
Yep.
And I would think part of this would be to talk to a few positive customers who've been happy and talk to some that haven't and find out what the issues were.
So you had four or five weeks of meetings in a total process till you kind of unveil the plan? How long are we looking at?
I, I think we're looking at five weeks with one day a week to document the processes, collect the data, brainstorm the solutions with the personnel involved, and then build a plan of changes to make. Some of this will also be measurements. How do you measure the process? And standard work or procedures so that it's maintained going forward after we improve it.
So by November, we'd be unrolling and starting to use this?
I hope so.
Yeah. The, the other part I want to put in there too is this proposal was written as a not to exceed. So if it takes less time, that's fine. If it takes, and it'd be less cost. If it takes more time, that's on us. It's a fixed price, not to exceed 12-6.
What happens a lot of times is you get the whole group in the room and they start charting it and they say, well, why do you do this? And the one guy says, well, I do this because of this. And the other one says, well, you don't need to do that, I do that. And so it, it basically becomes a, a way of bringing everybody together, getting them to think about it, and then actually figuring out which ones are the best ones. And a lot of times it's like, why do you touch it? It's always come to me.
Very true.
Where's, where's funding coming from?
No, well, it's going to come, some from the general fund, some from the utilities. We'll, we'll put together some funds and... I, I wanted to get it done before December because December is the start of the new special events year. And we're going to see a lot of permits starting to roll in, particularly from Main Street and the Chamber in the first week of January. And if we're going to have this new process rolled out, I want it to be as effective as possible. I don't want her sitting there waiting for months while we try and figure out, do we need to have a special events action team meeting or not?
So once it's in place, if it's in place in November, December, we don't have any coming in, can we run a few through to find out? Just check, look for bugs? Is that part of it or?
Well, we always have something coming through.
But yeah, the big...
December would be a terrible month to actually launch it. January would be a great month. So, and then in January, we're going to see a lot of activity. I, I'm hoping that we kind of run a couple through the process before we finalize in November.
All right. See how it works.
Other than Knickerbocker, we don't have anything that's happening in January that I know of. Do we, do we have others?
We have, generally, we have right away, early in February, we have the Rotary Beer and Wine. Knickerbocker includes several other events. We generally, what happens is they all want to get their permit in right away, early in the year. So I, I think last year we saw maybe nine or 10 in January. And then, and then they started to, February and March and April were pretty heavy. Then they thinned out, but they've been, continued to come in all year. I mean, we just had the, you know, there are some new events, events that are coming in. We just had the wine and cheese event that came in for, for the Rotary Club. The Alliance Club, they're running their first ever family night in the park. What's the other one we just saw? One Table. That was a new one we'd never seen before. So it's, it's processes that, that, and they get difficult. And that, let's say, take the recent Rotary event, it was held in Greenwood State Bank. They had a bunch of vendors setting tables up all over the place. They wanted to be out on the street. They wanted an area in the tunnel in the building used, so it affected their, their picnic license for their liquor. It affected how they set up their fences. It affected where they had their gates. Fire occupancy and exits were a problem. So there were just a broad group of things that had to be handled. The building, the food, you know, the, the building inspector had to get involved, the Jefferson County Health Department had to get involved. So it creates a, it's not just an easy, we're going to have an event and here's our permit. We actually have to think about a lot of other things. One of the ones that we had was the Arts Alliance event, I think, where they had a storm. And they wanted to know what kind of emergency operation plan we had for their evacuation. And it's like, we don't make one for you, you're supposed to have your own. So a lot of times, they look at this and they fill out the permit and then they submit it to us and we help them kind of work through those. But that's, those are things that you don't necessarily catch or know who touches it. And a lot of times what happens is departments get it, they don't respond because they don't think they need to. At a minimum, they should be sending something and saying yes or no. Sometimes one of them wants to know what everybody else thinks. Well, nobody else responded. And generally, the fire department has a lot of questions and the police department generally tries to control the roadways. And so they have a lot of issues that they're trying to pass on. And a lot of times, that information isn't passed on to everybody else. So Public Works doesn't know what to barricade or not to barricade or what's being allowed to occur in the streets. And so it's just a, it's a, a group of issues about being able to communicate internally and being able to process fast enough to get it back to the customer and out.
So you see this as shortening the length of time for the approval process?
For everything. I see it as being more effective. You know, when we see the first event, I think we'll be more effective, not necessarily faster, but more effective because we'll be able to say, you need this and you need this and you need this, and this is how you get it and this is where you get it at. And get it into us and we can review it and then we can have a committee meeting and kick it out. Once that first one's done, then generally the second, third, fourth years are easier. Just like Rotary, you know, they said that first event was, took a lot more planning and effort and purchasing. The next one is easy. Well, it's the same for us. Then when they start changing it, you know, like Town and Country Days, we had the big event. Every so often, we have a special meeting where we have everybody sit in the room and go over the event. If they want to change how their tent is, the beer tent is set up, that takes a lot of evaluation. You know, they, we want to look at their weather responses, all those types of things. So it, it gets to be a, there's a lot more for us to review and think about than people realize. How do we get emergency vehicles in and out? They, they don't necessarily think about that until an emergency vehicle needs to get in and out. And then it's like, how do you get in, there, and there's no room or no way, you know? Certain events need to have bathrooms. Well, I never thought about that. But by state law, they have to have a certain number of bathrooms available for every so many participants. And so if they are not telling us, if they're not giving us the information upfront, we have a difficult time processing it. So it, it becomes those types of things that if we can get a good process in place, get a good application, get a good process in place, we can move the first one through faster with, and more effective, and then the rest of them will be much easier to continue to handle.
So you're going to build, you're going to build flow charts with, with checklists for key stakeholders and...
It's probably what he's got right there in his hand.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Any further questions or?
I just have a comment. I think this is a really good idea because it also takes it out of Steve's personal hands for...
Remembering everything.
Well, or even for being responsible because his job is to see to it that things are being done the right way for the city. And this will provide a checklist for the group.
For accountability.
So the people that are having the event have something in front of them. And, you know, Steve can do his job to make sure he, you know, make sure things are getting done. And the people involved with the activity will have what they need and they'll know who to go to when they're stuck at at some point.
Anything else? Call the vote, please.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
And, all right. Motion sixteen eight two three.
Wait, one thing. Could you kind of leave or leave the flow chart so we could view it later on?
I'd be glad to stay and put it on the table if you'd see it tonight.
Okay. All right. I'd be curious.
I'd be glad to keep it because it belongs to another camera.
Oh, well, I just want to see it.
And remember, this is a treasury department. It's just something I have to do.
You can leave it, we're fine.
Leave the money too.
And eight two three, can we have that read, please?
Motion sixteen dash eight dash two dash three directing the city manager to authorize the consultant to proceed with the Sandy Beach feasibility study. Whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by Wisconsin state statutes may grant the city manager the ability to accept and approve this feasibility study. And whereas the city council has reviewed the feasibility study proposal by Place Dynamics and it meets with the requirements set by the city council. And whereas the staff prepared a request for proposal for a market research feasibility study for a restaurant, lodging and banquet slash meeting hall on the Sandy Beach site and Place Dynamic submitted their proposal. Be it therefore moved the sixteenth day of August 2016 by the city of Lake Mills council that the city council does hereby approve the acceptance of an agreement for Place Dynamics completing a feasibility study for a restaurant and lodging on the Sandy Beach site at a cost of $18,000.
All right. We got a motion adopt?
Shall move.
A second?
Second.
All right. And Steve again? This was something we asked for or?
Right. The council asked for this. They asked me to put it together. We went through and we, we did some evaluation and, and asked for some proposals. The one that we determined we felt was the best was Place Dynamics. They tend to do ones that are more in our market rather than the great big markets. And they also have a lot of background in cities of our size as far as planning and understanding the issues. And I, he provided a lot of samples that he's done in the past that, that you can look at. This is something that the council requested. The way we would do this is I would have them do it in December so that we could pay it in 2017.
So start in December? It's like a three-month project, right?
Yeah. Start it in December so that we could pay it and start our first payment in 17 and have it finalized before the end of the winter.
Any questions on the study?
Just a clarification. This is not mean we're selling Sandy Beach, does it?
No.
This means...
Almost exactly the opposite.
Okay. Just to make sure that the public knows that before this goes out on the internet and we end up getting shot at, so...
No. Remember, we, we had an issue with the restaurant.
Right.
And we discussed having to do something with the restaurant. And then we decided to look at a broader scope. At least evaluate it and make a determination of whether it was feasible or not. And that's what brings this up. It doesn't, it's more along the lines of, we know we have to do something with the restaurant. Maybe we, there are a couple other things we can add to it and we'll evaluate that and make a good, good determination. But it doesn't mean we're selling anything. It just means that we're, we're looking at what options we have for utilizing the space on Sandy Beach.
In fact, I might argue it's the opposite of selling. It's, we're looking at a piece of property we own and how can we make it better?
Yep.
How do we make it a better place, so?
Yeah. How can we make it more usable by the community?
Yep. Any other? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Krkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
All right. Resolution sixteen thirty-three, can we have that one read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash three-three, Richard Potter claim against the city. Whereas the city of Lake Mills received the attached claim for damages from Richard Potter for damage to a boiler that was claimed to have been caused by a power outage on or about April 23rd, 2016. And whereas the city's insurer has reviewed the claim and has presented information to the city council regarding the claim. And whereas the city, Lake Mills City Council, having considered the claim and information presented to it, may act on the claim by granting it or denying it, or the council may disallow the claim by simply doing nothing and allowing the 120-day period in which to act to expire. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Lake Mills City Council has reviewed the claim and accepts the recommendation of the insurer and city attorney and hereby denies the claim in its entirety pursuant to Wisconsin state statute 893.80 and does direct the city attorney to provide proper notice of this action by certified mail to the claimant.
And a motion to adopt sixteen thirty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, I mean... Call the vote, please.
Mr. Krkovic?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Uh...
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Resolution sixteen thirty-four, Ridge subdivision, can we have that one read, please?
Resolution sixteen dash thirty-four, Ridge subdivision in White Pines Development, acceptance of public improvements. Whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills has heretofore entered into developer's agreements with Talmer Bank and Trust, which details the obligations of the developer for completing the partially constructed public improvements needed to serve the subdivision plat known as the ridge as well as the replat of the ridge, also referred to as White Pines, all of which are located within the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. And whereas the required public improvements have been inspected and deemed complete as shown on the letter from Strand Associates dated August 4th, 2016, which is incorporated herein by reference. And whereas all necessary lien waivers from contractors performing work on the improvements have been received, copies of which have been attached to the August 4th, 2016 letter from Strand Associates. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lake Mills City Council that the city does hereby accept all public improvements constructed to date in the subdivision plat and replat of the ridge.
And a motion to adopt sixteen thirty-four?
Shall move.[1785.83]
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Anything we need to know further?
I think after 22 years, it's ready to be final. Even with the issues we had with the changes in the developers and the final bankruptcy issues and the takeover by the bank, it's now complete, up to standard. And we feel that it's time to close off the subdivision and accept the public improvement.
Any questions? Call the vote, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kukavich?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And Resolution 16-35, also subdivision?
Resolution 16-35, Ridge Subdivision and White Pines Development, Release of Letter of Credit. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills has the heretofore entered into a developer's agreement with Talmer Bank and Trust that details the obligations of the developer for constructing the remaining public improvements needed to serve the subdivision plat, known as the ridge, as well as the replat of the ridge, also known as White Pines, also within, all within the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. And whereas all remaining public improvements have been constructed and verified as being complete through inspection by Strand Associates. And whereas the attached letter from Strand recommends those completed improvements be accepted, and by separate resolution, the council has accepted the public improvements for which Talmer Bank and Trust had been obligated to complete under its developer's agreement with the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Lake Mills City Council, that the letter of credit that had been issued by First Banking Center, a division of First Michigan Bank, heretofore known as FBC, in the amount of $639,710, is hereby released in its entirety, and a copy of this resolution is to be sent to Talmer Bank and Trust.
All right, motion to adopt 16-35?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the vote, please?
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kukavich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Ordinance 11-68, can we have that one read, please?
Ordinance 11-68, authorizing stop signs located at Elm Street and Birch Street at their intersections with Pine Street. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section 1, pursuant to Wisconsin stats 349.07, the City of Lake Mills is authorized to designate locations for the placement of stop signs. Section 2, section 6-2-3, stop signs placement is amended by adding the following: Elm Street at its intersection with Pine Street, Birch Street at its intersection with Pine Street. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as required by law.
And with this sign's already in place, we're going to make a motion to waive the first two readings, go right to the third?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Take your call vote, please?
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kukavich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And ordinance 11-68, we got a motion to adopt?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Call the vote, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kukavich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And ordinance 11-69, can we have that read, please?
Ordinance 11-69, creating no parking zone on Elm Street. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section 1, section 6-3-2, no parking zones, Elm Street is created as follows. Elm Street from the sidewalk on County Highway V, where it intersects with Elm Street on the east side, to a point that is 267.5 feet south. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
And this one as well, can we get a motion to waive first two readings and go right to the third?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Call the vote, please?
Mr. Kukavich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And then a motion to adopt ordinance 11-69?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Who had it? And the vote, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kukavich?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And ordinance 11-70, can we get that one read, please?
Ordinance 11-70, creating and regulating the use of golf cart crossings. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section 1, section, section 6-1-7, golf cart crossings is created as follows. Section A, golf cart crossings are designated and marked with official signs at the locations where cart paths have been approved by the city and constructed at specific locations where the cart paths intersect with Pinnacle Drive, Forest View Court, and County View Lane, Country View Lane. B, all golf carts shall stop and yield the right-of-way to all vehicles approaching on the street before and entering, crossing the street at the golf cart crossing. C, golf carts are prohibited from crossing streets in and near the golf course at locations other than designated and officially marked golf cart crossings. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law.
And this one's not ready yet, correct the signs and that?
No, first reading is good.
First reading is good? This one will pass to the second reading? And recommendations for future agendas?
Uh, Mr. Kukavich?
Yep.
I just thought I'd point out that there is a possible policy decision that you might want to think about on the golf cart crossing. There is the ability for the council to require reflective markings on the golf carts when they cross in the crossing area. I left it out, figuring people aren't golfing at night, but I did want to bring it to your attention in case somebody wants that added to the ordinance before it gets adopted.
So the signs that are there wouldn't have reflective tape on?
No, the golf carts themselves.
Themselves would have.
Yeah, so that if they go across and a car is coming, there's a chance somebody will see them.
So they don't need to, if the car had the reflective tape, it would be illegal to cross without it?
Right.
What kind of tape markings, anything?
Anything that would be reflective. But I left it off, figuring people shouldn't be golfing after dark.
They golf after dark.
Do they? Oh, I guess they do golf after dark, until I don't golf. So, um, I just thought I'd point that out, that if you want to add that, I'd be happy to add it.
Is that, is that any issues?
I'm not familiar with those crossings. Are they, they're going from one part of the golf course to the next?
Correct, and they cross those named streets.